My pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Mooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi. Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rizika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. I'd like to have approval of the agenda.
Approved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, that takes us right on down to Martin, your report, the city administrator's report.
Okay, before I get into my report, it just occurred to me that the old days of synchronizing your watches is pretty much over because everybody's watch changes at the same time. The first three are just meetings that I attended, but you probably know or have noticed from your agenda, both the Heritage Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission were very interesting meetings that have produced two of the items that are on your agenda for consideration tonight. So I don't need to go into that because you're about to consider them. I had a meeting with the owners of the property where the storage units are. It's called Trade Investors LLC. It's basically two of the Baumann brothers own that. About getting an easement from them. And they also, they attended the meeting along with representatives from Spire, the gas company, who finally got back to me. Except, the guy who came wasn't the decision maker. He was just the guy they sent down to find out what the options were. So we had a good meeting to talk about their needs, our needs, whether or not they were compatible. As you're probably aware, we're gonna be changing the grade of the road right in front of the service building with the valves in it for the gas company. And so, the elevation of the road will come up such that it affects the use of the front door. So, they're gonna want us to move the door to the side of the building as a condition of getting an easement from them. But since we're going to make the use of the door that's there difficult, that seems to be a reasonable request on their part. Other than that, they're having meetings. He said after the first of the year, he would get the parties together and they would call me and we would get together and work out the easement. The people who own the storage units just wanna make sure what we do doesn't keep them from getting an entrance there because they're planning on expanding the storage units. So we're kinda coordinating the grading plan. The engineer was here and it all, I think it's all gonna work out well. I just hope that the, Spire doesn't come up with some demand other than what we had at the table because those were pretty low-cost, kind of understandable requests on their part. One of the themes tonight is going to be that we don't qualify. I went to, there was a grant cycle that opened up because some federal money came to the Parks Department for trails. So I went to a meeting to find out how to apply for that. And, there's a point system. They give you points for, single use gets one point, that would be us. Multi-use gets more points. Multi-use with motorized vehicles, like an ATV trail gets more points yet. So, we're pretty low on the points except, they said that wasn't so much of a problem because a third of the funds has to be spent each category. So there will definitely be money spent. What was a problem is that we didn't budget it. They expect to see it in the city budget, well, you only know the budget until the grant cycle comes out. But number two, they want to see some citizen input, citizen participation. So, the lesson for this is, they're gonna be funded next year, they told me that. So we need to spend this year organizing some citizen input on park projects and the trail and preparing our next year's budget, the money that would be set aside to match the anticipated cost. We did get an estimate from a construction company on what the cost would be. The estimate for just, without any other work like design was eighty-five thousand. It's a twenty percent match, but they allow soft match. So, as an example, we could remove the old trail using our own personnel and equipment and the value of that would count as our match against any federal or state funds. So we wouldn't be out of pocket. So we'll continue to keep that on the burner, on the front burner. Work through the park board to organize some community input and be ready for it on the next grant cycle. I was approached by a citizen whose name I did not write down complaining about not being able to get a permit for his golf cart because it was gas-powered. And, he left before I investigated that. And, since I don't have his name and don't know how to contact him, hopefully he's watching the meeting or we're here about it. Okay. There is a limit in our ordinance that says the gas carts, if you're renting them, have to be electric. But not for owned units. So, if you have a cart, gas-powered golf cart, for your personal use and you wanna get a permit with the city, it's good. And we have been issuing them. It's only if you wanted to open up a business and rent them that they have to be electric. And the reason for that escapes my memory. There was a lot of discussion in the former Board of Aldermen about terms and conditions for allowing golf carts and then later ATVs, that came after the fact. And other than noise, I'm not sure what the reason for limiting rental gas carts to electric was established.
So, his is no problem?
His is no problem.
So who told him that he could?
He misread the ordinance.
Oh, okay, alright.
He wasn't denied, he just came in and said, "Why can't I get it?" Because the ordinance says it's electric.
Okay.
And...
So it's a non-issue?
Right, non-issue. I just, again, didn't know how to get in contact with him, so... The water tower physical construction is complete. We were making plans, they worked today to remove the surplus soil and we took that down to the cemetery to start expanding the cemetery grounds so that we can put in the water line. That's something we're gonna do with our own forces alliance is gonna do that. The issue is that the contractor says he needs eight weeks of predictable weather to paint it. And obviously we can't place it into service.
Did you remind him that this is Missouri?
Well, you know, we've had a couple of conversations about it. I was concerned about that, but we've had meetings with the county and Brad Arnold from the Community Center and Steve and Gary. And, the problem and why we needed the water tower is, when they're in operation, they'll have a demand for a lot of water that they need to get quickly, a lot of volume that the pump system won't produce. But the pump system will produce enough sufficient water to fill the park, just over a longer period of time. So whether or not the tower gets completed, the painting, so we can fill it, in time for the water park really isn't critical because if need be, it can be filled through the existing system. It just couldn't be very well operated.
Are they talking temperature-wise?
Yeah. And...
Well, most paint does require at least almost sixty degrees to cure properly, so...
Now, if you wanna talk about this, we can go into closed session later. I put it on the agenda in case you wanted to talk about it. The contractor will not be completing the contract within the time allowed. We're entitled to liquidate damages. And, whether you wanna pursue something like that is something we should talk about in closed session. So, when we get to the closed session, either say yes or no and we'll either have one or we won't.
Okay.
Thank you.
AT&amp;T sent me a site plan for the tower, for the cell tower. I thought it was very nice of them to send it to me. We've had two meetings out there, the site had been staked. And then the guy calls me about a week later and says, "Did you approve the plan?" And I went, "I didn't know you were waiting for me. I mean, I've already approved the plan." So anyway, it's now been approved. And they're now working on the final plans, construction plans, and will submit a lease for approval. The second part of the "we don't qualify" is this VW diesel grant, another point system grant where you have to accumulate a certain number of points. Since our diesels are used locally, we just don't have enough road miles to qualify. It's just, we just don't qualify because we don't travel enough. And we would end up getting like, two points out of a hundred. So, that's not gonna benefit us. I think we talked about the nursing home and the steps they've taken the last time we had a meeting. They're still working on the permanent solution to that problem. And Alderman brought up the late fee on our utility bill and thought it was perhaps a little high and asked me to, us, because I asked somebody else to do the calling, to figure out kinda how the surrounding communities charge. And so here it is. If you're interested in considering lowering that to kinda match closer to what other communities are doing, just tell me and we'll write the ordinance and make the amendment. You know, you can tell me tonight if you don't want to, just wanna think about it. Alright. And then finally, I attached... The only hang-up that so far on this remodeling business is this room and how the board table will be configured. The original thought was we'd have an elevated bench.
You had explained it to everybody in the audience as what we're talking about here, the board, this remodeling.
We're remodeling City Hall.
Yes.
And, on the other side of that wall, there are spaces that are not used, except for junk rooms, basically. We're talking about removing that, partially, opening up this room so we have more seating. If you go to other city halls, you will discover that many of them have kind of council benches that are raised and semicircle, so that the board can see the audience, the board can see each other. But even taking out that wall and putting in that semicircle would reduce the useful space in this room to the point that it just didn't seem to work out very well. So we looked at two other alternatives. One is to just do a straight bench, which would work great as far as space is concerned, but the Board of Aldermen would not be able to see each other. Which seems to me, it'd probably be a benefit. The next one is more of a kind of a V-shape, which again preserves the space and gives kind of an angle on the bench so that you do have an opportunity to see each other. And the last one, which is the first sheet there, is that U-shaped arrangement, which brings, which leaves a lot of space, makes it so everybody's looking at each other, but we can't elevate it because if we have an elevated bench, we have to make it ADA compliant. And there's no way to ramp up to this bench. So you would be kind of as you are now, at ground level. In addition to which, the judge would use it and he's expressed a preference to being elevated so he can see what's happening. So, well, I think this is the, this one is the most functional in terms of just the meeting itself. It's got some drawbacks. The straight one to me, you know, I thought you might wanna be able to see each other when you talk. So, I think we're down to either that more V-shaped one against that wall using the newly opened space or the U-shaped one, which would be kinda where we are. Or just leaving the judge's bench there, coming up with a little better, newer table than we have here that's kinda pieced together and just keep it the way it is. And I decided to let you make that choice.
Bad idea.
With that last one you mentioned, Martin, would that still be taking out that wall?
Yes.
Okay. Would you move it over?
So it's gonna all move over this way?
We wouldn't have to, but again, it's not, I'd rather have the meeting space.
So that's gonna go all the way out that doorway?
Yes.
How does that enhance the audience or the room with that one?
Well, if we leave this here and we remove that, then we've got more seating that we can set up around the council table.
But you'll open more space that way, too.
Right.
I guess we'll get together later?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. I tell you what, why don't you... I mean, this isn't urgent and nobody's waiting, so why don't you consider it in two weeks? Tell me what you want me to do. We'll be ready to go. We're ready to go, whatever you decide.
You ready?
That's it.
Thank you, Martin. Chief Kenny, you up there?
Sitting here, buddy. I have my report in front of ya. A couple things I'll bring to your attention. Last year, we ended up with 230 calls for the year. We have had one year since I've been keeping the records that was a few points higher, but that is one of our highest years. To give you an idea, back in the Stone Age, when I started keeping the records, we were running about forty calls a year. So, in thirty years, we've gone up a whole bunch on the number of calls we run a year.
Is there any sense of black? The nature of the call chain?
A combination of alarms, with a lot more alarm systems in the community and then EMS assist helping the ambulance. And when they have a fill-in ambulance going, coming in from out Bloomsdale or Wingard, we go to help stabilize and get here to transport, so...
And that was not true, Rip, in the earlier days?
No, in the early days, we did strictly fire. We didn't even do extrication for car wrecks and things like that. It was just a fire and that was all we would go to, so...
So it's expanded level of service?
Exactly. Over the years, the fire department's kinda become the catch-all. Whatever the cops in the city can't do, our public works can't do, they call us. We pick up a lot of things like hazardous materials and a lot of other expectations out of us. I'm proud of the volunteers we have. They do a great job and they're happy to serve. Otherwise, they wouldn't be there. Another tidbit of information, this nineteen year is the one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth year of our fire department. We're starting it this year. The actual fire department was dedicated in November of eighteen ninety-four. So this is a year that we're gonna try to celebrate throughout the year with different things. Try to do some more Throwback Thursday pictures on the Facebook page and getting out there and letting people know about our history. We do plan to have an open house, et cetera, in November around the date of our anniversary. We are looking for any old artifacts, articles, things about the history of our department that anybody might have out there. If you have any of that kinda stuff, you can contact myself, our Assistant Chiefs went. And we're hoping to have a big, big deal in November to celebrate one-hundred-and-twenty-five years as a fire department. And probably the most important thing that everybody would like to hear about is we did do an inspection trip on the new truck last week. We left on Sunday and came back on Tuesday. It's what they call a midpoint inspection. Basically, the majority of the fabrication on the truck is done, but they haven't started the finish work yet. So it's a good time to go in and look at it and see what is going on. They have promised us a final inspection and delivery in February, February seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. While we were up there, myself and Assistant Chief went and had several meetings with several key players up there, production managers, CEO, et cetera, about being late. And they all expressed a lot of heartbreak that it happened. They just have grown so fast, they couldn't keep up with their growth. So, in order to appease us, we're getting everything that we asked for and they're doing a few cosmetic things for the truck, some nice things to make it look nicer that we didn't spend the money on. During the inspection, some of our guys found a few things that we wrote it in spec this way, but it might be a little bit better this way. And they've agreed to make those changes for us at no cost to us. And then we also did get the extended warranty I had spoke about before, so we'll have two years bumper-to-bumper on this thing. Anything goes wrong, it gets fixed for nothing. So, we were pretty satisfied with the overall thing. They're still, in my opinion, a little bit behind on where they should be for that inspection, but they're promising us a month. And with the discussions we had, I'm confident they'll come through with that. So we should have a new truck sitting in our firehouse by the end of February. After that, it'll take probably about a month, month and a half of training on it. And within two months, we should have it on the road and running calls.
What do you have that truck in the lineup as far as responding to calls?
It would be third out for city structure fires. We're still gonna run our first-out pumper tanker because it has a big tank of water on it. And the way we fight fires, we go in there with what guys we have and start with the tank water we have and then find a hydrant to supplement. And with a ladder truck like that, you really don't wanna commit it as your first-in truck because it may be a use that you see down the road that you have to put it on the back of the building or do something different with it. So that gives us time to get started with the firefight, figure out what we need to do strategy and tactics-wise, and then place it where we need it.
Kenny, do they deliver the truck?
They can do that. We prefer to go up and look at it because we will do an inspection, we'll be up there anyhow. And by driving it home, what that does for us is gives us a feel for the truck and put guys behind the seat so they get some drive time learning the truck, just even bringing it home. Plus, gives us a chance of, we know what it feels like. We know if we notice anything different from the time we leave the parking lot to the time we get home versus them coming home and, "Well, it was like this, but they didn't bother to tell us something's changed in route." So it gives us a better feel for the truck if we drive it.
Okay. On the pump side?
It'll be fifteen hundred gallons per minute pump. It's only gonna have a three-hundred-and-fifty-gallon water tank on it, but like I said, it's not gonna be our first-out attack fire truck at this point. We'll still do the big tank on our big pumper tanker first.
Is the ISO thing the problem?
Yeah, I did take that eight-hour class. I traveled up to O'Fallon, Missouri, and sat through eight hours, which is real boring, but in talking to them, whenever I talked to the local rep that did our last ISO audit, he told me, whenever I was talking to him, that we were actually due to be audited this year regardless of whether or not we had this truck. So it's gonna work out good for us. I told him about what I had talked to the ISO people on phone about, it takes a full calendar year. And he says, "No, don't worry about that. If you guys got it, we're gonna give you credit as soon as you can. So as soon as you get it in service, we'll come down and do the audit and you'll get credit for it immediately."
Do they have an audit this year?
Yeah, we were due regardless.
The truck won't be here till next year?
Pardon me? The truck will be here in February. Yeah, the truck will be here in February. By the time we get it in service and everything, I look for an ISO to probably around the middle of summer. By the time we get the truck in service, get it in our lineup and do everything with it, testing and everything. And I've already talked to Water Department and let them know, because Water Department is part of the ISO audit, so they're aware that they will be coming in this year, too. So, and it just happens that the nine-one-one dispatch center that we use is part of the ISO audit also. And a neighboring agency over in St. Francis County just had an audit. And the nine-one-one service used to get, they get a point system of one to ten. They were averaging four to five points. They got a nine-point-five on their dispatch over their out-of-ten possible. So we're gonna have a lot of points coming from them that we didn't have before, plus the added truck and some other things we should... I don't wanna go on the limit and say we will a hundred percent get the four, but we should have our four with no problem, from what I'm seeing so far. But only time will tell. Actually, as a matter of fact, I can mention the department I was talking about is right outside of Park Hills, Lettington. They just posted on their Facebook page, they were able to get down to a three. I'm not sure how, but they made it all the way to a three, which is impressive for a small department. I would love it if we could get there, but I'll be happy if we can get back to the four we had before. But we're gonna be doing everything we can. There's a lot of hours involved in getting it ready, but we'll be ready for them.
But that would impact insurance rates, though.
It should, on most insurance companies. Any other questions?
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, have a good night.
Gary in the house?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys had my report. Any questions, comments?
Y'all ready for the pitch?
I knew that was coming.
Sorry.
Ready as we can be.
Yeah.
You got all your folks acclimated to the destruction?
It went well the last time, and so I think we'll be good.
You got the same crew?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody new?
How much left do you have to do on Seventh? Are you down over there?
Seven?
Yeah.
And we hit it hard. It looked pretty... Have you been up there?
I saw, I think maybe when you were partway done.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen the finished.
It turned out well.
Gary had a lady speak to me about that and said it really looks... She said, "Well, they paved this whole street." I go, "I don't know how Gary did that, but she was happy with it."
Yeah, I've been having some folks ask me about that one, so I'll follow up on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello, John.
Hello, David.
You've got the report there. We've had Heritage Commission and Planning and Zoning. A lot of that's coming to you all tonight. You've got some numbers there on Building Department. I updated the property maintenance. Just wanna point out, one number on that property maintenance report was that forty-six percent of the letters have been repaired. So, that number is improving and majority of the rest of the letters that were sent out, we have a plan for. One thing I didn't put on the staff report, we did have, remember we talked about two months ago about rental properties? I gathered together with a few landlords, a few renters, and we had a conversation this week. So some ideas came out of that and we're gonna move forward to try to see what we can do to make some improvements and maybe come up with some ordinance changes. So you'll hear more of that in the coming months. That's all I got.
Make questions?
You've got some ongoing issues. I guess they're still being addressed as far as Ninth Street for empty...
I had to issue two notice of violations on Ninth Street this week. So those courtesy letters, we talked about that, went out. Then I sent a second courtesy letter and there are two properties on that street that have now gone beyond that.
And by courtesy letters, you...
Just a friendly letter from the city that says, "Hey, there's a violation, needs to be addressed." The next step is an actual notice of violation, kinda similar to a ticket.
Do you issue those or does...
I do the notice of violation. If there would be no correction after that, then it would be a site check from the police department.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, David, thank you.
Committee reports? Takes us to public comments. So, I'm sure we have a lot of public here. Does somebody have any comments to fire to or do you wanna wait till...
It's up to you. Normally what happens is... Whether you want to have people comment now on items that are not up or you want to allow comments during the deliberations. Most people opt to have whatever comments are made before the item comes out on the agenda.
I think that's what we'll do. So, that's our answer with everybody unless somebody has something they wanna say now.
I'm sorry, what are you asking?
For public comments, the floor is open right now for public comments. If you're public, if you're here to speak about a certain issue, we can get to it as we go through the agenda. I don't know if everybody, not everybody has an agenda, but we have two public hearings. We're gonna start, public hearings, the first one is gonna be on the Wolf's and then the second one is going to be the public hearing on the large sign out on Thirty-two, so...
If anyone has a comment they'd like to make other than on those items, now would be the time.
That would be it. If you're here to make a comment on other than that, because we're gonna be talking about, oh, there's a lot of things in our agenda tonight.
How about, alright, comments on taxes?
That'll be good, yeah.
Alright, then, aside from the public hearing items, I wanted to address the board about taxes. My name is Micah Rowsey. I live at five-five-five North Third Street. I'm sure everybody knows that already. I'm sure everybody knows that already now. First off, I want to talk about our police department. I want this to be perfectly clear. I love our police department. I think they do an incredible job keeping us safe. They deserve to earn salaries commensurate with surrounding police departments because they are good officers and should earn a good living. I think attaching the value of our police department to a tax initiative is unfair. It forces people to think, do I want to pay more taxes or do I like our police department? And I can tell you that I love our police department, but I don't want to pay more taxes. Sales taxes, the citizens of St. Genevieve are tired of seeing our government find that the solution to every single problem is to increase the taxes to our people. We have sales taxes higher here in our sleepy little town than cities which provide their people with public transportation, sidewalks, and multiple services we as rural citizens never expect. We don't expect a lot, we don't get a lot, but somehow we pay a lot. With property taxes, I see that on the agenda is an increase of .2684. What is our current tax rate?
.6836.
.6836. Okay, so that's nearly a 40% increase. And we're starting to approach a 1%. That's more than Festus, it's more than Perryville, and Shannon County, Missouri is at .5. So why are we paying so much more? South. Why are we paying so much more? What are we getting here in St. Genevieve for our high taxes that they aren't getting in surrounding counties and cities? Where's the money going? We have earmarks that constrict our government to how we spend and to how we spend, and over time creates departments that become underfunded. And then we must increase taxes, and then other departments become overfunded, incentivizing them to waste in order to justify their funding. What I would like to see from our city and our aldermen is an overall tax plan that takes into account all of our needs, starts eliminating earmarks, and have that whole work session, and I know it'll be hard, but have that work session in the public view. I think that's what the people deserve. That's all I have to say. Anyone have any?
All work sessions are in public.
Sure.
The public to come to, so there's not an issue where we're doing stuff behind the scenes without public...
Sure, and I know that. And I think as far as the city goes, we have great visibility into what the city is doing. So I do appreciate that. You probably remember from my campaign for the county was visibility. I don't think the city is included in that. I think we're incredibly visible. I know that I'm visible right now. So that I want to congratulate the city for. However, I think we do need and we deserve as people the difficult work to put in a comprehensive tax plan for the city rather than recognizing a problem and hoping to put it up to vote to increase our taxes and having those taxes earmarked and then put ourselves in a position whether we value paying less taxes or we value our police department or whatever that tax issue happens to be. Thank you.
Mr. Rousey?
Yes.
You know, when you talk about earmarking and stuff and doing away with that, I don't know, I have vision issues with that if we basically we put the tax dollars in one little pool. You know, where do we keep control? You know, how do we keep control and stuff that those taxes are used efficiently to the best use of the people paying those taxes if we don't earmark them?
Well, what it allows is flexibility with the city government. If we see a need, then we can compromise on what might not have a need this year and has a need or a need that can wait one year versus a need that is immediate. When we earmark, we force a certain amount of money to go into a department whether they need it this year or not. It's not just all operating costs that are recurrent all the time. So if we have everything in a general fund, then that allows this board ultimate flexibility in how that money is spent and can hear from the departments what their current need is and budgets can be planned that way.
In the short time that I've been on the board and stuff, I've seen pretty flat numbers from each of the departments though to where basically there's little differences between the street department or the police department. I don't know.
I think something like that would be hard work for the departments as well.
Right.
If we said, hey, we're going to work this way now. You know, it is how businesses are run. And I know that government can't run like a business because you're obviously less-than-profit industry, but it does allow that same kind of flexibility that a business would have saying, we need this year, this is an immediate expense, or we need to fix something that's in front of us because it's broken and it's necessary for operations. But, and also allows us the flexibility to say, well, maybe this department or this area doesn't need immediately the amount of funding that they're getting this year.
I'd like to, I don't want to...
No, go ahead.
It's an interesting concept. Are you aware of any cities particularly like our size that operate in that fashion?
No.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
Any other questions?
As far as our earmarks go that you're referring to, you know, the departments within, you know, the Streets Department, the Tourism Department, all that, there's not funds that are... I mean, when we budget, we budget out of our general fund for those departments. Now, there's like a special roads tax, and there's the cemetery and things like that, and that stuff that has to go to those.
That's a function of the statutory authority that established the tax.
Right.
You can't...
Which is not us.
You can't have a ban tax and spend it for roads.
Right. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but all the taxes that we levy right now are all taxes that were voted on and passed by the people of St. Genevieve?
Yes. Now, I don't want to put words in Mr. Rousey's mouth, but I think he's arguing...
Those things can change.
He's arguing that the proposals are to pass a tax that is dedicated to a specific purpose, say, public safety in this case. And maybe, maybe to say that's not the best idea.
Yeah, and that historically, that's how we've passed taxes. You know, I just came from a year in the nonprofit industry and we do the same thing is sell a story that says we need money for this area and then get money for that area and then in times that change, because they always do, that area doesn't need that funding anymore. But all of the money that was collected for that sits there and waits until we can start asking people...
Or you eliminate the extra tax.
Yeah. Or you eliminate the extra tax.
But we are able to amend the budget as it goes in case of spending...
Well, as legislators, you can propose to the people to amend pretty much anything. We can get rid of all of the earmarked taxes that the city levies.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about within the budget as it's set up right now, as a board, we're able to amend the budget to move funding around as needed to places like that. So we do kind of have that ability to do that right now. I just think there's maybe a misconception in the public that the city is, you know, constantly raising taxes on people and grabbing people's taxes. We don't have the ability to do that. The only thing we can tax is what the people of St. Genevieve allow us to tax through the vote.
That's not my perception that the city is constantly raising taxes, but it is my perception that the city and the county are constantly asking to raise our taxes.
And the people are free to say no.
Certainly.
But out of the 9.225% sales tax that we collect, the city's portion of that is 2%?
I think it's 4.
The county's portion is 2%. The state's portion is about 4.5, something like that.
Our county is 3%, state is 4.225%.
So ours would be about 2.
2%.
2%. 2%.
So out of that whole 9.225%, we only have 2%?
Right.
Certainly. And, you know, you are at the disadvantage of populace who are suffering a county sales tax that's one of the highest in the state. And I'm sorry for that.
That again was voted on by the people of the county of St. Genevieve.
And what we're also dealing with...
We can argue about that election and how many people...
And we will again.
Sure.
The fact remains...
It was voted on. It doesn't mean that...
The fact remains that the people of St. Genevieve voted and passed that tax.
And what we're also dealing with is other municipalities who have put proposals on a ballot, Prop P, to fund their police department raises and they're manned on. That is what we're up against. We are losing officers right and left to the better paying jobs in other communities.
And here again, I am not suggesting at all that we should not raise the salaries for our police department.
And you know what? I don't want to get into that discussion. We'll get into that discussion when we talk about the tax. So if anybody's got any more questions for Micah, fine. If not, we'll move on. Micah, thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Schweiss?
My name is Kenny Schweiss. I want to talk about sales tax. I personally think that we're up almost to one of the highest in the state. And if we get any more higher, it just, I don't think it's going to be good. Perryville, 6.1% sales tax. Look at Perryville. What do they got? They got a super big factory down there, 1,300, 1,400 people in and out of that town every day. How many stop at Walmart? How many stop to eat? Go to a show, go bowling, whatever. I think we're way, way behind on trying to get new businesses into this town. Wasn't that what Progress Parkway was put out there for was for businesses and factories?
That's what I understand.
And how many businesses or factories are out there? Why ain't the city doing something about that? Trying to get more business in here somehow to get more sales tax, get more people coming in that way, you know, in the town. How many factories have we lost in this town in the last 20 years? We've only got one factory that employs more than 50 people. That's Eric Scott, am I correct?
He was over the window.
How many people do they employ there?
More than 50, I don't know.
Well, we got two. How many do we have 30 years ago? You know, we had quite a few. So I think the city needs to look at getting some business in here. I don't think just raising our sales tax and raising it and raising it, pretty soon we will be the highest in the state if we... Because evidently, we don't have enough money to pay the police to stay here because there ain't enough tax money to go around. So that just boils down to a couple of things, you know? Everybody in this room knows somebody. They go to Festus, Perryville, Farmington. They go to Walmart. And like I said, they'll go to a show, go bowling, this and that. People got a reason to leave this town to go out and do stuff and they don't mind the travel. They don't mind it at all. It's just 30 miles. Well, I don't think it's the answer to raising our sales tax. Need to try to see where else it could be pulled out of in our tax system to give our police a raise. Personally, I wouldn't want their job. Anybody here want a job where you get a chance of getting shot every day? You know? I mean, I don't think it's a very favorable job, you know? You've got to have the will and the right to do it, you know? So, yeah, they probably do deserve more money, but we just need to look at pulling it out of somewhere that has excess or wasted money or wasted tax money. Pull it out of somewhere besides raising the sales tax. I just don't think it'd be good for... I think it's going to make people more mad and they'll just, you'll have more people going out of town shopping.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Does anybody agree with me on that or...
Yeah, I agree.
Boy, we'll be discussing it later. Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Anybody else?
Mayor, can I say something?
Carl, you've been having the floor. Without getting up?
I can't get up.
Okay. Just state your name. Okay.
Bring the mic to him.
Here.
Oh, if you can't hear me, I quit.
No, I only got one thing I want to say.
Go ahead.
But the issue that's getting me is this deal with the county commissioners and who else is involved in this, trying to take that marina down there, clean it out because of boats. Them boats are not coming up and down that damn river as fast as you think. Who's going to pay for that? It's a lot more money taken out to clean that place out, make another ramp all the way out to the river. You don't know what you're getting into. First of all, the city don't have to clean that out.
I don't believe we're planning on cleaning it out.
Sir?
I'm sorry, I don't believe we're planning on cleaning it out. It's not in the city. We don't have any jurisdiction over that.
There always got something to screw it up. Hey, I've been around long enough to find out what's going on.
Okay, let me know because I haven't heard anything about it.
I'll talk to you sometime.
All right. You know where to find me.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments before we move on to the public hearing? Very good. And at... At 6:47, we will open up a public hearing and we'll be discussing, consider a request for Cassie and Aaron Wolf for requesting a special use permit to operate an in-home hair salon at 1045 Westwood Drive. You still want to come up to the, for questions? Please? Come to the podium? I don't know, David, do you need to be up here on this or...
I can answer questions.
Yes.
Actually, Dave, you should provide a synopsis of the Planning and Zoning Commission's actions.
Sorry about that. Stay there though.
Aaron and Cassie will apply for a special use permit to operate an in-home hair salon at 1045 Westwood, single-family structure in an R1, single-family residential zone district. I think you have some of the staff report information there. Customary home occupations are allowed in an R1 zone district with a special use permit. What I provided to Planning and Zoning were some additional terms and conditions which you also have there, including off-street parking. Have to maintain a business license, have to have a fire extinguisher in the house, limited hours of operation from 8 to 8, Monday through Saturday. Only the residents of the facility, or I'm sorry, of the dwelling can be engaged in work activities. No display of products visible from the street, no signage except for a two-square-foot in-area sign to be attached to the building, off-street parking, and a number of vehicles used by clients or business-related visitors limited to two at any given time. That went before Planning and Zoning last week. I believe you have their recommendation there. They approved it for a six-month term and the vote carried 6 to 1.
They could have some clarification. You said residents of the property. So if there's three people living there, all three of them can engage in a hair salon?
They could.
Somewhere I thought it was just limited to just one person.
I mean, the terms that I wrote were just terms that I wrote. It's, I mean, the terms that I wrote were just terms that I wrote. There's nothing in ordinance about that.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the six-month thing, how was that arrived at?
Planning and zoning discussed some sort of, uh...
Like a probationary?
Yeah, probationary period, because there were neighbors who spoke against it. Um, so maybe we could reassess it in six months, but versus a reassessment, we, they just proposed a six-month permit.
They'll approve it for six months, and then after that six months, it would go back before the board?
Same process.
One year, you know, for their.
Because we used to do these all the time, and they were one year or whatever, and it created this huge amount of paperwork. And I suggested that we, we adopted it as a board a couple of years ago, that, like City of St. Louis, and that allows a certain amount of that, and you have conditions. And as long as you don't violate those conditions, you can do that indefinitely, as long as you're not top of the list upsetting the neighbors, and then whatever, having a dumpster or so on and so forth.
Sure.
I, when I saw the six-month thing, I thought, well, if, if this goes through, it's kind of like making us, everybody go through this again.
I think the reason for the six-month, well, the reasons you gave, the neighbors were, yes. So the come, the, uh, the agreement was, let's try for six months and then reassess.
And then you specified that it goes back before planning and zoning.
Okay.
All right. After it passes, if it passes after six months, everything's happening on, and that would be days.
I see. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
The off-street parking, where is that going to be in the driveway?
They have off-street parking available. Their driveway is significantly long, but it also has a turn where two cars would fit out with the props make two cars. So that is what they have told me will be their off-street parking.
Do we currently have any other in-home beauty shops? I know we've had them in the past for years.
I don't know about beauty shops. I know they have existed in the past in the city. We currently have gun sales out of a house. We have professionals that work out of their house. Um, it came up in the meeting, but, you know, I'm certain there are more than go through the permit process that exist out there.
Last beauty shop operating out of a home, now that we know the address, but it's in, uh, um... Where Jackie Gons lives. The house is at Parkwood, not Parkwood, what is that? Point, it's on Point. It's on Point Base.
Point Base. Point Base in Brookdale.
Is Joyce still in business?
Joyce.
Joyce Beckman on the corner of Third.
The biggest, the biggest.
I think she is.
Besides all that, the biggest complaint that I received was parking. Everybody's worried sick that there's no parking in front of their house, which there's limited parking in front of their house, but they have a huge driveway. I don't think parking's going to be an issue. Uh, I know one of the homeowners is worried about all the traffic at the intersection of Market and Westwood. I really don't think that's going to be an issue, so that, those are the only issues that, that were brought up, that I, that I saw that were brought up, unless somebody tells anything else. You know, I know another thing that I, there's, I talked to Cassie about this, even, you know, there's quite a few businesses in town, and she's not cornered the market on it. So I don't think this is going to be a, I personally don't think that, you know, maybe she is that good, maybe they'll be, but she'll have it scheduled out, I'm sure that's not going to be a problem. And then with this six-month deal, if it is, we could look at it again, so. Any questions for the, you know, a couple of us here?
I just got a comment about the joining property owners who are opposed. I mean, that, in the past, when we had that situation on a special use permit, I believe it was almost always denied, you know? And that's, there's, there is a problem, I believe, that the joining property owner, this would be a no-brainer for me, just to say, yeah, let's go with it, you know? When you have the folks living right next door to Aaron and Cassie, it's a red flag to me, you know? So I talked to both the folks, and they said they couldn't be here tonight, but, and I'm, go ahead.
Yeah. So basically, when you address your customers, they call in for an appointment?
Correct.
What are you going to tell them?
Uh, what do you, uh?
Park in the driveway?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Park, there's not going to be any street parking. Honestly, my driveway is so long that it would be kind of odd to park at the street to walk to the salon.
Because that's the biggest concern I heard also, was people parking other people's cars in front of their home, even though there's no regulations that prevent that. You can park wherever, you know, unless it's supposed to be signed, but, um, yeah, other than the concerned people. Uh, and I think we'd want to get along with your neighbors and stuff, so I would monitor that, well, say that those sorts of things.
I can't imagine that you would have several, several cars at one, at your, at your business. You have appointments, you're going to have one person there? It's a one, one-seat operation, yes?
Correct. The most that I can swing is maybe while, while a color is processing, I can do a possible haircut in that amount of time. Oftentimes, though, I'm dealing with families, I have a younger clientele, so a lot of times mom's getting her hair colored while, you know, the two kids are getting their haircuts while she's processing, so then we're still to one vehicle in the driveway.
So back to your concern, Buck, this denial thing, um, I mean, there's nothing to say, just because people show up and oppose, it has to be denied, is there?
No.
No. I'm just saying, in the past, you know, it would be, it'd be no issue to me, except for these folks that live right next to Aaron and Cassie.
Can I mention something? I'm in the understanding that there was already a business operating out of this house years ago. Ollie Grass used to run a car business.
I heard about that. Nobody ever said anything about that?
There was also an in-home daycare ten years ago down the street. I know that because my own daughter went to that. It was Jessica Gordon, her husband was an officer, he ran a daycare on Westwood Drive as well. So this isn't, there's probably been more, they just haven't gone this route.
Right. Well, that's the only thing that I'm saying, is that when you have somebody opposed, that's, that to me is, is something I have to really look at.
But we, we've had special use, and a lot of people opposed.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Well, my question is, how, how much power does a neighbor have to tell a landowner what they can and can't do with their land if it's legal?
Right.
You know, I, I may not like my neighbor's gardening style, but I can't tell them, you got to plant this kind of plant just because I don't like what you're doing.
Yeah. Well, I'm just, uh, well...
But that's why we went with the six-month review, to address some of the concerns of the, we're not not listening to the neighbors. That's why we did a conditional one, to make sure that their concerns are, are either concerns or not. They may find out that the concerns they have never materialize. That's why we're doing that one.
Can I?
I would think that, uh, they almost felt like, we're not heard. I don't...
Well, they are being heard. That's why we're doing a six-month instead of...
I did speak with one of my neighbors personally, and kind of addressed their concerns and let them know, like, for instance, I have no Sonny Cox was here, he was concerned about our dogs. Had, I had a chance to speak with him prior, I guess I didn't realize that that was proper etiquette, was to speak with your neighbors prior to doing all of this. I kind of wish I would have known, but I, you know, this is our first time doing anything like this. But we had already purchased bark collars for our dogs, so that if anybody comes up, we're not, I don't want my customers having my dogs parking at them. So that was something that we were already preventing prior to him bringing up that concern. Uh, with the Williamses, I explained to them the way that we're doing things, we're going to use the turnaround in our driveway, so cars can come up, they can back into our turnaround, and they can come out frontways at the end of our driveway. Um, and once again, I, I told them about the other industry that, or businesses that have been in the neighborhood, and they just weren't even aware that it's ever happened. That had a lot to do with us purchasing where we purchased, because we knew that this may be something we wanted to do in the future. That's why we didn't go in somewhere like Valley Springs or...
I think the fact that you're...
Go ahead.
The fact that you're willing to address those issues is where to park ahead of time, you know, having that parking, um, I think that should answer their concerns and stuff, so. And the fact that you see somebody doing otherwise, you address it with them, I think that'll go a long ways with the neighbors.
Is there anybody in, in the, in the chambers that's opposed or here to speak against this? If that's the case, then I'd like for this board to make a decision.
You got to close.
Six fifty-nine will close the public hearing.
I make a motion to approve.
Just make a motion.
I make a motion.
Second it?
Go.
Cooper.
He said motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we need a roll call vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any opposed? Here's, thank you very much.
Yes.
Go ahead. I, I got cramping my leg.
Okay. At seven o'clock, uh, we're going to start another public hearing to deal with the considered request from Robinson Outdoors LLC, when requesting a special use permit to erect and operate a V-shaped, double-sided, ten-foot-by-twenty-foot LED digital billboard at seven sixteen St. Genevieve Drive. David, do you want to tell us how it went on with planning and zoning?
Sure, you have a staff report there, but you can see that Robinson Outdoor applied for a special use permit to operate a digital LED billboard at seven sixteen St. Gene Drive, which is Highway sixty-one. That's a C1 general commercial zone district. You have all the applicable ordinances there, but basically, LED digital signs are allowed on specific roadways, and this is one of them, with a special use permit. They have provided some materials, I think they have some to hand out also. A question came up earlier about the location. It was in the packet, but it wasn't highlighted, so if you need to know where it's going to be, I could point it out to you. There were no comments, no speakers at planning and zoning, one way or the other, for this item, uh, and it was a vote of approval. I did apply a few terms and restrictions to this, and that was that it, basically, they abide by all applicable St. Genevieve municipal codes, they abide by the applicable sections of Missouri revised statutes, and no additional signs of this type can be installed on that property. Uh, if you don't know from the packet, typically, MoDOT regulates these type signs, but what they regulate are called controlled travelways. Highway sixty-one through St. Genevieve is not a controlled travelway. So they, um, do not have to get a permit from MoDOT. However, they still have to abide by those applicable portions of those statutes that have to do with content, lighting, things like that. Went to, um, planning and zoning, and a motion was to approve, and that motion carried five to two. Any questions for me?
I guess before we, go ahead, I'm sorry, you got questions for David?
You know, in, in looking at the information that was provided, that was the first question I had, was where is the information? You know, there was just a little X on the corner of the lot, there was no dimensions, you know, because I drove out there today and parked on Highway sixty-one and stuff, and looked down and tried to imagine where I thought that sign would be, you know, and how much it would block as far as view of other businesses, uh, you know, and I just found that kind of hard to believe, that we've already passed it through planning and zoning without some of those questions asked.
Yeah.
Where's the sign at? You know, uh, we've got the size, how big it is, uh, that's pretty clear, and it is LED, uh, even though I know there's some restrictions on LED, you can't have red colors.
Things that would, well, you can have reds inside a sign, but you can't just have a flashing red sign. I did provide these pictures, were they not in your packet? This is a before and after, with the sign, without the sign.
It wasn't on my electronic packet.
Okay. I think they must have went out. I apologize, Bob, I have colored ones here.
Is this, is that the last two pages, Dave?
Yes. And I don't know that the aspect ratio is absolutely correct there, that's just an approximation of what it would look like before and after.
Yeah.
It also had a site plan on there. No, I didn't give you the, uh, the specs I have in here, but I, I did give you a site plan of where the sign would be located.
All, all that stuff is going to be done when they get to, before they get to building first.
Well, that would be the building permit part of it, but I can answer any questions that you have.
So this is in here, right below the weak sign?
And again, that's my guesstimate. That doesn't come from Mr. Robinson, that was just my guesstimate.
And, and just for your benefit, I would be very willing to meet with any of you at any time to make sure that this is not a problem. We would look at the site, if you have any concerns, we want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And we would work with you any way we can to make it work.
So how high is the sign?
It was twenty-five foot to the bottom of it, and the reason that we selected twenty-five foot was for safety reasons. We, I talked with the zoning, uh, with Dave, uh, and we thought that that would be a good number to get it up out of the way.
You don't obstruct traffic?
It doesn't obstruct traffic. That's, that's correct. And also, this structure is built to a hundred and sixty mile-an-hour wind load rating, which is well beyond, I think, the requirements of the city. Having been in the business before, I've never lost a single pole structure. These are going to be built much stronger than the ones that I had in previous years. But, uh, safety is a, is a big concern, sir.
Twenty-five foot to the bottom of the sign?
That is correct. And that could be changed, if that was a problem, but I thought that might be the best suitable, and I, I talked with David on this, and, um, we're, we're open to discuss that, but I thought that might be a reasonable height.
David, it says here on number four, the maximum size, height is twelve feet.
Twelve feet, right.
Maximum height of the sign itself, the physical sign. His sign is ten foot by twenty foot. That's the height of the sign mechanism.
Not the height.
Not the pool.
And, and sir, if, if the sign were put that close to the ground...
Right.
In, in my opinion...
That was my problem.
In, in my opinion, that would be a safety hazard.
Right. There again, that's why I keep emphasizing the fact of lack of information to be able to make a decision on things like this. Those things, to me, are important, and...
Bob, there, it is in the package, it's on the electronic, and it's in the packet here where the sign is. We've got a picture of it in the...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, on, in our packet, so.
Right.
We did get it, and there's a picture of the sign there. I mean, I mean, that's up for, I think that's up for, the way I understand it's up for, you're going to work with us, where to put that sign.
Absolutely. I will meet, I will, I will solve any problems that need to be solved there with you. Uh, and I, I...
Think I'm opposing this thing, it's just sickly.
Sure.
Questions.
Well, and I want you to know the kind of guy that I am to work with.
Right.
And before I get started, uh, my name is Ed Robinson.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
And I'm from Perryville, Missouri, I've been there my whole life, uh, past president of the Perryville Development Corporation, been involved in a lot of the activities in Perryville. We have grown our community, we have a wonderful community, as well as what you do. And, uh, I am here to discuss an LED billboard. The, the LED billboards are kind of taking over in the billboard industry. The reason for it is because there's not, there's not that big a need for that many billboards anymore. You can do all this with one billboard. And, and the really neat part of these LED billboards, let's say that you're a restaurant, for example, you can advertise your breakfast menu, you can advertise your lunch menu, you can advertise your evening menu, and you can change it like that. That's the new part of the technology. And you're talking about the progressive community and wanting to be more progressive in your community. This is an opportunity for you to look at that. We could, I could take a picture of you with my iPhone, I could put happy birthday on it, send it back to Robin, who would then approve, she approves, anything that goes up on that sign. And the question was brought up to me, well, could there be any flashy women or anything like that? Well, I want to tell you something. Last night, I had dinner with our pastor at Herb Fowler's, and I'm a, I'm a very strong Catholic, and that will not happen. That's not part of who I am or what I am, and that, that will not take place in this We, and I want to talk to you about why this is going to benefit your community, okay? If you look at my handout, you will see that, uh, my ads will be interrupted at any time there is any disturbance of weather, if there's an amber alert, or if there's any crisis, uh, my, my software will be set up as to interrupt the ads, put up there what's going on, and be... be a, be a real safety issue for your community. I'm very proud of that, and I very much stand behind that. I think that that would be strong for your community.
Sir, could you move back to the podium, this is being televised.
I'm sorry. Also, I will donate to you one face that can rotate from time to time, whenever we have vacancies, but that face will be yours forever, and you can promote all the different activities that you have in your community, you can work with my assistant, Robin, who does the artwork, we will put artwork up, we'll help you change ads, you can put up as many different ads as you want. This will be very welcomed by your economic department. Perryville has, in the past, has rented many billboards to, to stimulate our, our industry and what we have done, that's one of the means that we have done things. And I think that the people of this town will have an opportunity to rotate within our radius of other structures, and it was brought up, other people could advertise there too. Nothing I can do about that, but I can tell you that we will try to use, and go to your people, and allow them to utilize this service, and, but I'm not, I can't guarantee. But I am here to be part of the community, I wanna help this community, I think I have that reputation from where I've come from, and I will do my best to work with this community.
I've been in, driving in some situations, especially at night, and you're passing electronic billboards such as this on the side, and it switches, and it switches to something with a white background, and I can't see a darn thing when I'm driving it, it almost blinds me. Is this, is that still an issue with these type of?
Well, let me, let me tell you, we are governed by the Missouri Highway Transportation Department, and we do meet the requirements, we do stand by their requirements. Now, this, this road here is not governed by MoDOT, but I can tell you that we will abide by the MoDOT regulations, which definitely include all of that, the brightness, the switching. And also, I have brought with me, when I, my LED expert, Chris Kern, who, who can speak more fluently than I can about all of that.
Okay, I'm thinking of particularly, it's in South County, right on fifty-five as you're headed north, to the right, and I, more than once, I've been driving by that thing, and it switches, and I feel like for a couple seconds, I can't see where I'm going.
Yeah, so I can, I can certainly talk to that, so.
Put your name.
Yeah, I was gonna hang tight. So, Chris Kern, from Quincy, Illinois, formerly from Perryville, Missouri, been in the digital LED business for a little north of twenty years, and I've worked with a lot of historic districts, a lot of municipalities, really from coast to coast, over, over that timeframe. I'll be the one answering any technical question that you have relative to the board, the technology, any of those things, so I'll jump right in and answer that question for you. So, part of the technology, and I know exactly which board you're talking about, the new technology all has ambient light photocells built into them. So that board will brighten and dim based on ambient light. So, for example, when our board, when this board comes out of production, it'll do twelve-thousand nit, which nit, a nit rating is how bright an LED can burn. Twelve thousand's the highest in the industry. At nighttime, this board will operate at less than eight percent of its max brightness, to eliminate exactly what you're, you're referring to. The other thing that is, is big for any company that I work with, I've been working off and on with Ed for north of twenty years, we will do everything possible to encourage advertisers not to use white backgrounds, as a whole. I, I own a scoreboard and video board company, and do Jumbotron's around the country, and we almost refuse to let our advertisers put white backgrounds on their ads for that exact reason. But to actually answer your question, that board will have a built-in mechanism to eliminate exactly what you're referring to.
I've seen some of the signs down in Cape Girardeau, they have their light turned off, but even at nighttime, they adjust themselves, and it's like you're looking at that TV right there. It, it looks like an oversized TV screen, not the LED lights that only have four or five colors.
Yeah, correct.
And I could add something to that, as the owner of the company, we will control the brightness and dimness of the sign, that is under our control. So, if we're having problems, please, please call me. I'm here to help. I'm not here to create a problem, I'm here to help.
So, to answer that question, so, the billboard, the billboard industry is regulated by the Highway Beautification Act from nineteen seventy-six, and so when you look at the Highway Beautification Act, it says there can be no moving parts, no flashing light, no strobes, no moving, no video, no animations, nothing of the sort. It has to be a static billboard image at all times. So unlike driving down St. Genevieve Boulevard, where you may see an on-premise sign that is flashing, or having something scroll, or fireworks for Fourth of July, that can't happen on, on our board, 'cause we, even though MoDOT doesn't regulate St. Genevieve Boulevard, we actually have a code of conduct in the, in the billboard industry that we will follow, or we have to follow for that matter, and so there won't be any moving parts. So to, when you say a television screen, you're absolutely right, the only difference is it's immediate instantaneous change, and you don't notice, you know, it happening.
Chris, I think one of the things you might be referring to is in Farmington, there is a sign up, that's an on-premise sign, that's not a billboard. That sign does have moving parts, but that is not a billboard, that's an on-premise sign. Highway Department should put an end to that.
What other questions does anybody may, may have on the board? I mean, we can talk about the public service, you know, package, it's quite intuitive, we actually, everything is fed through an RSS feed, so as the National Weather Service comes out with a tornado warning, or maybe there's a tornado on the ground, or the Missouri State Highway Patrol produces an amber alert, when that hits, our software will recognize it by zip code, and so the second that it hits, we recognize it by zip code, all ad gets preempted, and that message goes up into, into the spot. So nobody's approving that on our end, so there's not like a, a lag or a wait between somebody having to approve it on our, on our phone, or an iPad, to be able to take that message live.
So how long do the public service messages stay on?
Um, you know, actually, we, we really run with, based on what they're running. So if an amber alert runs, what'll happen is, the second that an amber alert goes live, as it, as it dings everybody's phone, right, it's, it kinda seems like it's an annoyance, right, it goes off, and then it goes off three or four or five more times, so the billboard, it'll stay live for that duration, then, once that happens, it'll get put into rotation until the Missouri Department of, or the Missouri Highway Patrol kills that message, it'll get put into equal rotation at that point, but it stays solid until such time that they clear it. Same thing with weather. And so, you know, you've got, I mean, there's a lot of different aspects to it, when you look at, you know, when Ed referenced us giving a spot to the city of St. Jen, there's a tremendous amount of case studies, and I have a lot of personal history with that. So take, for example, Bridgeton by the airport, we put up, I put up the first digitals in Bridgeton back in two thousand and six or seven, and we did the same thing, we gave the city of Bridgeton one advertising spot, unlimited artwork, change as much as they want, they're advertising their golf course, their fire department for seat, for, for child seat safety, checking, you know, any of those things, you know, the water department, if there's a boil order, any of the things that happen in your city that you need the public to talk, you know, to hear and talk about, is part of this package that you have free rein on.
And let me add one piece to that, I wanna be part of your community, I wanna be looked at favorable in your community, and I wanna do the right thing. I think I have that reputation.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
One of the concerns that was brought to me by a couple of businesses in the area and stuff was, and you started to touch on this, that you could not control, basically, the advertisers. But here this billboard's gonna sit right, pretty much in the center of our business district, basically trying to lure people into other towns to do business there, away from possible businesses right here in our town. And I felt obligated to do, and it wasn't the people in my ward that did that, but I feel obligated to bring that to your attention.
So, so I respect that, and obviously, hear that a lot. You know, really where digital billboard came, where the digital billboard industry came from, you know, the first digitals were put up in the country in ninety-eight, Baton Rouge, Louisiana was the number one location that it was put up in. What happened is, as the radio industry became more and more fragmented, and the television industry became more and more fragmented, and unfortunately, as much as I like the newspaper, less and less people of my generation are reading the newspaper, so that continued to decline, that's where digital billboards came from. So, when an advertiser in St. Jen would say that to me, if I was in there sitting down with an advertiser from St. Jen, and they were expressing that to me, you know, you look at the radio, at the radio industry, right, where's the radio for St. Jen coming from? It's coming from Farmington, Perryville, and St. Louis, South County, you may have some AMF, you know, some AM, small FM stations here, local, that'll take care of Valley and St. Jen and those type things, and those people certainly advertise there, but at the same time, people from Farmington are hammering those radio stations, and in, in your newspaper, you know, and hitting local, you know, television, whether it's Cape, or KSDK, or KMOV, bleeding into this market as well. It's a very similar situation. One of the unique things about Ed and I's business model is this, so we're building these digital billboards in more small towns than just St. Jen. Perryville's getting ready to get a couple, Festus, St. Jen, Chester, Illinois, we're looking at some markets regionally, because the advertising industry's changing so incredibly quickly. Give you an example, a St. Jen business for thirty dollars a day or less would be able to advertise in St. Jen, Perryville, Chester, Festus themselves, to attract more people to St. Genevieve. So if you're fortunate enough to get the federal park designation downtown, what you're seeing is, like Sleeping Bear Dunes is a prime example, right? So that was a state park, then it gets some federal designation, now you see some digital billboards outside of town, right, not in the historic district, 'cause we are staunchly against that, but outside of town, driving more traffic into the community from a tourist, tourist destination. And so when you look at a city like St. Genevieve, and, and the gentleman that spoke earlier about manufacturing, and jobs, and those things, I live in Illinois, I'm from Missouri, I wish I could move back to this side of the river, but my wife won't have it, but I tell you right now, once industry leaves, it's really, really hard to get it back, so you gotta find your identity. Well, at that point in time, St. Jen's identity, to a large degree, is your historic district, and it needs to be preserved, and you need to drive more people to it, and that's really what our vision was when we targeted St. Jen, about trying to put one of these here, was trying to find a way to drive more people into the community, and, and generate more business, you know, here.
Well, I just heard that from one of our business owners, how we're, we've gone backwards with no business, and, and I, I had that same conversation with one person today about, well, this is gonna hurt all of our businesses. Well, you know, the Herald runs ads for everything under the sun, you get the newspaper, so, yeah, I don't think, maybe it will, I don't know, but, you know, I, I just, I don't, can't sell me on that.
You know, I've been, I've been on your side of the table, I was the deputy mayor in Quincy, Illinois, and so I sat on that side and listened to presentations over here, and being, the opportunity to sit on both sides, at the end of the day, we look, you know, I always look at it like this, is, you know, we can, as a municipality, we can sit on our hands and not try to grow, and let the business owners kinda dictate that. My wife owns a gourmet popcorn shop in a building that was built in the early eighteen hundreds in Quincy, and it's amazing to hear all the people around here talk about, well, we hate that that's going on, and we hate that that's going on, and we want it to go back to what it used to be. I, we value everybody's opinion, but at the end of the day, Ed wants to invest a quarter of a million dollars in this community, 'cause that's what this investment is gonna cost. He wants to do that in Chester, and Festus, and Perryville, because we have a bigger plan, and that's to try to generate and grow all of southeast Missouri, and that's what this package is all about, so.
Any other questions?
How did you decide on the location?
Uh, it was, it's real estate, it's no different than buying a house, or buying a commercial piece of property, right, it's location, location, location.
Chris, I'm the one that selected that, I, I've been in the business, I lived in business for fifteen years before, and it really comes down to walking around sense. And if I was a buyer, where would I wanna be? I've sat with many people, time after time, and by the way, there's a number of people in this community that are very interested in writing this sign. We, we really couldn't go out and go too far with this, because we don't have this secured yet, but I do know that there's people in this town that are very interested in what we're doing.
Are they here tonight?
No, they're not. But I did not, I don't wanna put them in that position, and I, I didn't ask them to be here, and I don't know if they even know what we're doing tonight.
This two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment you just referred to, that's the cost of the sign, or that's the cost of the lot, any adjacent property?
It's, that's all of the above, it's, it's the total package, it's the two digitals, it's the structure, it's the construction, the real estate, the development cost. We are not purchasing the building next door.
No, no.
No.
And I think, Chris, just so that we're clear, I think we're looking a quarter-million dollars probably just for the structure.
Any other questions for these men, before I open it up for the public? Is there anything, anybody here that have like a public comment to speak about this billboard? Please come to the.
Hi, everybody, gentlemen, lady. My name's Lauren Smothers, I am living at six-five-four Rosier Street, and I, of course, welcome to the community, I appreciate your business, and what you're trying to do for our community. First off, right off the bat, when you said placing these billboards outside of town, you focused on just downtown, the historical being the only part of St. Genevieve, well, the uptown is St. Genevieve as well. I don't have a problem with billboards or anything like that, I just think the location isn't a good fit for our community, it's a busy stretch of road, which you want, but it's too short of a busy stretch, I think, I just think it'd be too much distractions. You already have people coming in and out of the businesses there, I think that this would be just something to look at as they're driving, and texting, and eating their Big Mac, and everything else, and seeing the stop sign, oh shoot, you know, but while reading your sign. I think your sign would benefit maybe being farther down sixty-one, or more outside of town, to lure people into the town, not having people that are already in the town, reading what's in our town. That confuses me a little bit, and as to draw other people from out of town, that can just backfire too, that can, they could be in our town and see Reeves, Harvest, Smorgasbord, and say, well, that's where we're gonna go to dinner after we go downtown and see our, you know, historic homes. My, my main thing too is, is just safety, I, you see it all the time, people are texting in that stretch, and it's, they slow down to look at Bosler's funeral announcements, you know, so I can't imagine them wanting to go by the sign fast and not read it, or wait for it to change. Again, I, I appreciate your business and what you wanna do, I just wish you would find a different piece of real estate to place it in.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Also, you mentioned like how radios are bombarding you with things, and newspapers are, but that's at your choice to listen to, this sign, we have no choice, that sign's gonna be stuck right in front of us, and of course, it's gonna be there, but, you know, we can turn a radio off, we don't have to read the newspaper, and we don't have to look up at this sign, but I challenge anybody to drive by that and not look up there. And that's what you guys want, I get that, but I'm just a little concerned about safety issues, and just cosmetically, it's, you know, if we're gonna become a national park destination, I think we should work on more beautification of our entryway into our town, not just putting more signage up, and just taking away from the charm that we're trying to get them downtown, but I think we should spread that charm throughout St. Genevieve, because this is gonna be a gateway, this is our entrance, sixty-one's a busy passage for the new people coming into our town, and I would like to encourage like the businesses and the city just to worry about more curb appeal, and not a billboard that just does all these wonderful, I mean, this is just all great, all these things are just wonderful. You know, I, I get that, I just don't think that position, that, that place is a good place, I don't think it's a good fit for St. Genevieve at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any kind of different thing to order, or, I mean, whatever?
I'll be short.
Okay, good.
I'm learning how to speak. Um, I, I'd like to reiterate what she just said, oh, sorry, Olive Kraus, one forty-five Washington Street, about the old school. We are a national park, and I know it hasn't materialized yet, but it's coming, and sixty-one is the way most people will drive into our national park, and though it isn't historic, drive into our national park. And though it isn't historic, it isn't the historic downtown, it is going to have an impact on people's experiences and what they see visually, and this sets the mood. People come here to get away from this stuff. They come here for our architecture and our history. They almost want to time travel back in time. And this just throws it right back in your face where we are. It's just, I think we have a unique opportunity now to set the tone and the mood for the future of our town, and I would urge you to vote against it.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Kathy, you'll be next.
Martha Atkins. I reside at 627 Market Street. I don't think that, and thank you for coming in and explaining all this to us, but at this time, I'd just like to keep our town the way it is. And we've got a lot of, lot of businesses that's out there that has been mom and dad businesses and passed down on to children, and that's just a slap in the face with a big sign that, that we really don't need. I think it's, we're trying to get our kids to quit texting, and, and they're trying to drive, and now they're going to want to look up at a big billboard to see what's going to turn over next or next. And before you know it, we've got crashes on top of crashes out there on 61 that we just don't need. We just don't need it. Thank you.
Kathy?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kathy Kreitler, and I live at 12 Patricia Court. And I think it's wonderful that you guys have an interest in our community. You did clarify some things. I did think it was more of the flashing light thing. I didn't understand that it was more like a moving picture thing, which is better. But I'm not happy with the placement, location, location, location. Again, there's a lot going on in that strip. There's a lot of businesses. It's a big sign in a small area. I think it would be wonderful on 32 or 61, either place. Have no objection to it there. But the size of it and the location is just, I think, too much. There's too much commotion going on there, and it is the movement, even though it's not flashing, people will be watching for the movement. I think it's great that you do the public service announcements and things. That's wonderful. I'd caution the aldermen, if you do approve it, do a percentage. Has to go to St. Genevieve businesses. Don't allow them just to put whatever they want, giving us one segment, St. Jen one segment. I would suggest to, you know, do a proportional thing if it does get passed.
Kathy?
Okay, thank you.
Mike, are you there, someone?
Yeah.
Can you me introduce myself again? Mike Arouzi, 555 North Third Street. Someone brought up whether or not it would block a business, and I understand that a placement wouldn't do that. However, it would by attention. These kinds of signs distract from visibility that currently exists with those businesses. It also brings, you know, I disagree that a new revenue of advertising doesn't increase business. But what it does do is create a competitive advertising market. So if I'm the owner of Weeks, and now I know that a different restaurant that's whether a mile away or five miles away is advertising right next door to me, I'm going to feel obligated to start spending money on advertising that I didn't before. So these, these kinds of things don't really increase business, and it can direct traffic, but it can direct traffic in ways that we don't necessarily want. LED lights are distracting. Keep in mind, that is their, their intent. And those do present some safety hazards on the roads. I'm sure a number of the aldermen have already experienced that themselves. Let me make sure I have everything done on my notes here. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Anyone else? Is the chief in the house?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to come out and comment on this?
No.
There's a lot of safety, a lot of traffic, and it's right in your department. Do you have any comments at all?
I mean, again, they've, they've expressed that they are abiding by the highway's restrictions and requirements. I mean, I don't know that the local police chief is going to add anything to that that's going to be any more beneficial or less beneficial.
That's a good way to duck. Go ahead. You can sit down.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Wait a minute. Go ahead. You're going to come back, you're going to come back.
I just had a question. They said that it's not under MoDOT jurisdiction, so you don't have to abide by MoDOT?
But ma'am, we will follow.
Oh, you will?
Yes, we will.
And I'm thinking the MoDOT rules are for highways that aren't congested with businesses every single step.
That's not correct, because it's two-lane highway. It just, this used to be part of MoDOT, but for some reason, they dropped it. But like in Perryville, Highway 61, Highway 51, that's MoDOT.
Their businesses aren't as close together as ours are in that stretch.
But there are a lot of highways that are.
Okay, but I'm just saying, the special use permit with the, for our community that does have them close together. Thank you.
All right, if you have one more, if you have one more comment, then we don't, we're not going to have a, we're going to have a, we're going to make a decision here.
Absolutely. I just wanted to say that with the public service announcements, with those on the sign, I think most people already know that we all, most of us, get those on our phones. And those, those are distracting enough, but we get them. So it's, it's almost like providing a solution that isn't really a problem. I don't think there's a problem with whoever's getting amber alerts or weather alerts or things like that. We know.
Okay, thank you. Martha?
I'd like to ask just one more question. How, how does this interfere with our land number helicopters that comes in to our hospital and stuff? Does that bother them, or?
I don't think that's going to be an issue at all, as far down the range as it is.
Okay.
I'd like to say just something really, really quick, because Bryant Wolfen, 210 St. Genevieve Drive, there's been a lot of opposition here. I just wanted to point out that there is some advocates for it. I would, I would certainly be in favor of, of allowing this. So I'm not going to get too much into detail. I know we're on time purposes here, but I just, there is some people that would advocate for this or be for this. So, thank you.
Real quick, and I'll, and I'll close fast. One of the things I was, I was remiss in saying is, from a safety perspective, and I respect and appreciate everybody bringing that up, Virginia Tech University, the Tantella Institute, and Federal Department of Transportation have all conducted multi-year studies on digital billboards outside of digital on-premise signs that offer the moving pieces. Digital billboards had a 0% factor on any risk factor to the general motorist, and all of those reports are public. If you guys wanted those after the fact or whatever, we could certainly supply those to you as well. The Virginia Tech study is incredibly impressive. They actually did a study of 50 digital billboards around the country, and all of them had a 0 to negative risk factor as far as accidents and stuff. So I'd be happy to stay late and ask, answer any questions on that stuff as well. I just forgot to mention that. So, thanks.
One more question. Where are they located now? I was wondering if you said something about Perryville, Chester?
I have one going up in Perryville. It'll be up the end of this month. It's going to be at the first stand, Outcourt McDonald's. I have one going up there. I have one in progress with Chester. We have a part of the site where there is no jurisdiction with the local authority. It's just a matter of the state permit, and we're working with other communities as well. Most, all the communities in Missouri do have digital billboards.
I mean, as far as Perryville, that's, that's not in a, like a downtown area, you know. I mean, it's different than what we're hoping to have.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to, I mean, I can speak to as many communities as you'd like about the exact scenario of St. Genevieve Boulevard. Quincy, Illinois, where I live, put the very first one up. It's the exact same scenario. It's business, 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 you know, all the way down Broadway. There's five digits.
Quincy's a lot bigger. I just don't know.
But they're, you know, and so, I mean, we can, I mean, we can talk about, you know, really any community that, you know, that, that somebody would want to talk about. We were proponent that they don't need to be anywhere near, they need to be in commercial, heavy commercial areas, is where, is where, you know, the industry as a whole suggests they need to be.
And the reason we went there is because they are allowed in that district with special use.
With that, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:39. I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I make a motion to follow planning and zoning for our innovation.
And approve?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Well, with no second on the table, I think it is tabled, then.
Well, it's not tabled.
It's not tabled, it's, it's over with.
Well, unless, I mean, it needs to be disposed, one way or the other.
Do I have a motion?
Arguably, if somebody was not in favor of seconding it, there might be somebody interested in making a contrary motion. Mark has to go behind.
Yeah, I think he has to need to make a decision. Either you make a motion to approve it, the recommendation, or a motion to reject the recommendation, or deny the permit.
Motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Is there any information that was?
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Of denying.
Of denying it?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Take a roll call.
I'll have a roll call vote on that.
Alderman Ruzika.
I'm voting yes or the deny.
Alderman Prince.
No, I'm denying.
Alderman Jones.
Yes, I'm the deny.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes, I'm denying.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Motion for denial carries.
Thank you very much. Sorry, sir.
I understand. Still want to say thank you for your time, and we appreciate you looking at us today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Takes us into the consent agenda.
I need to pass out the closed session minutes before you approve. I'm sorry. Put your hand.
I disagree. Move to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Takes us to old business. This will be a second reading of Bill Number 4256, an ordinance vacating a portion of LaCombe Street in the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri. I have a roll call, please.
Want to see if there's any discussion? Bob, look like you wanted to ask a question.
Is there any?
Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we get the concerns about building the pump into the area handled?
Yeah, that's not going to be an issue. I talked to, is Gary here?
I don't think that's an issue.
No, we can go across.
We've got plenty of room to get back to.
Yeah, plenty of room.
And that would be considered an emergency, would you? We have to write that.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
It's not going to be an issue. Not going to be an issue. Where are we at now?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4256 now becomes ordinance 4189.
Takes us to new business, Bill Number 4258, an ordinance providing for submission of general sales tax of one half of 1% for the purpose of improving public safety for an election to be held on April 2nd, 2019, prescribing a form of ballot thereon and containing an emergency clause.
Now, stop for a minute. We put two, two ordinances on there because there were two ways of approaching this. I think you ought to discuss kind of what your options are on, on the, on the two ordinances, and then move forward on whichever one you choose to move or not move forward on.
And you said that there was no way to put both on the ballot?
No, I don't know that.
Well, you can put them both on, but they could both pass, or they could both fail.
Or one could pass, and the other would fail.
Yeah.
So if you tried to combine the votes to generate the needed resources by splitting it between property and sales tax, you run the risk of neither being sufficient at the end of the day if they both don't pass.
Well, I thought, I guess my question was, the options were, one as a sales tax, and then the other one being a combination, sales tax, property tax.
No, they have to be separate, separately considered.
Okay.
I've got a question for Mark and stuff. On page two of your letter, the first paragraph
starts out, May 10. You know, you refer to a half-cent sales tax. Correct. A seven-eighths cent sales tax, or 1%. Right. Why does it have to be in those denominations? That's what's set forth in the statute. So I don't know why, but the statute allows for a tax increase of a half cent, seven eighths, or one cent. That's, I don't know why. Somebody must have had a reason for that many years ago, but that's the increment that you would increase. So is that only by municipality, or? For, for a sales tax for a third-class city. That's, that's set forth in the statute. Yeah, I don't, I don't know why that is, especially since seven eighths is an odd fraction. And if you do two seven eighths, then you got, you know, two, two eighths or one fourth sitting out there where you can't do anything with it. But I guess to allow you to do it different ways, the, there was some discussion about our current levies. Our current general levy for the general fund is, for the property tax, is .7316 per 100 such valuation. There's a parks levy in addition to that, that's .1251. A band levy that's a .0773, and a cemetery levy of .0480. With regard to our sales taxes, we have a general fund sales tax of 1%. No, let's see, I want to make sure. Yes, and we have a transportation tax, that's half a percent, a capital improvements tax, that's half a percent. So those funds have to go into those different funds. And, and so that's where you're at now. And the question is, number one, if you want to raise the, or it's not that you can raise a tax, whether you want to submit to the voters to raise a tax, whether it be a sales tax, a property tax, or neither, you know, if you don't want to even submit it to the voters. The, the property tax, there is a cap of 1%. And so you can only raise it from this .77 and change to 1% for a total. The funding for your general fund, real estate tax, is about 300, a little over $300,000 a year in revenue. And so you'd be increasing the revenue, assuming things were consistent, you know, of less than half of that amount. And the budget information that was provided to me from the chief was that they were looking to increase funding in the, in the department to the tune of about $160,000 with the salary increases and benefits in that. So that, that, that is why, you know, I don't take a position on whether you should set it for tax or which one you should go with. It's going to be up to the elected officials. But if you raise the real estate tax, you may not get the funding that even accomplishes the goal that you're setting about to do, assuming that's what you want to do. The sales tax issue would get you, like your current capital improvement, sales tax gets about $285,000 a year. And so that's a half-cent sales tax, so you expect it's going to be, it's going to be the same as that, but it's going to vary from year to year. So that would certainly give you more money than the police department would require. But this ballot language would allow for funding for public safety. So it would be both police and fire, emergency services, as defined by the ordinance. Now, there, the rationale behind putting that in the ballot language is that it would restrict your use of the funds similar to the capital fund. The capital fund has to be for capital purposes. This would be for public safety purposes. Now, having said that, it wouldn't restrict your ability to withdraw funds that you're currently providing through the general fund, if you understand what I'm saying. So it, so you have a lot of leeway with regard to the funds you're already providing out of the general fund. So you're, you have little risk of overfunding those departments because you're increasing this specific tax. But you'd be, presumably, you'd be promising the public that this would be an increase in revenue for those departments, rather than just kind of switching it out, if that makes, if that makes sense. But it would certainly have a guaranteed stream of revenue for the public safety, assuming that you wanted to put it on a ballot. But it would certainly have a guaranteed stream of revenue for the public safety, assuming that you wanted to put it on a ballot and the voters would go for it, so that's the kind of legal background, you just, you just all have to decide how you want to do this. This similar tax has been passed in other municipalities, and dedicated for public safety, different communities have worded the ballot language differently, some more restrictive, some less restrictive, and some just would pass a general, because it's really authorized as a general fund sales tax under the statute, and so the ballot language restricted further. So there are other communities that have passed the sales tax with a, an ordinance promising to use to increase the police funding, but of course, ordinance can be repealed later, so that's an option too. But I got the sense of the board that if you're going to submit this to the voters, you wanted to have it a little bit more guaranteed that that's where it's going to go to, as opposed to, you know, two years from now, a different board may see things differently.
I guess I want to clarify anything here, that there's no conflict of interest, because, one, I am a board member and I'm, and I'm also a local business owner, so is there any conflict of any comments or?
No, I would expect that every single person in the room would be affected by either tax increase or a lack thereof, so that's not a legal conflict at all, so you're, you're in the same situation as everybody else, really.
One of the issues that was brought up to me by another business, another few business owners, was these business owners deal in not what I want to call nickel-and-dime transactions, they're dealing in transactions of several dollars. And when we start looking at the sales tax on that bottom line, and the one particular gentleman referred to, he does a lot of tickets that are ten thousand dollars in that area and stuff, and when people see that nine hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents sales tax on the bottom of there, it becomes an issue. We in our business see that same thing multiple times. Now, when I stopped at the grocery store the other night, bought twenty dollars worth of stuff, that dollar twenty-three cents sales tax on there was not really a concern, but for major purchases, it is. Look at a new vehicle, forty, fifty thousand dollar, thirty thousand dollar vehicle, you know, the implications to those things are concerning. It's also concerning, as someone mentioned earlier and stuff, that, you know, we're now looking at one of the highest tax rates in the state, you know, and what will that send to people that we're trying to draw into the city? To come here and spend their money. A lot of concerns, I also believe we have a good fire, a police department, I want to maintain that as such. It's just a little hard to understand that we can get to where we need to be in one double swoop, you know, that we can't work at this, you know, in other ways and stuff, even though I've been in the budget process a couple of times, there's not a lot of money to throw around. Even though I do see some line item budget things I don't agree with, but we seem to fall short when it comes to wanting to make those changes.
Hundred fifty-five thousand dollars worth of line items? No.
That would be, that would be a stretch, but, you know, they're laid for us, and the law is, we can't do anything other than a minimum half-cent sales tax. That's not right, but that's nothing we can do about it, but, once a sales tax is imposed in a particular area, is there no ever changing that?
Oh, no, you could, you could repeal it, you could always reduce people's taxes.
I'd like to know how many times that's happened.
I don't know, well, I know of another municipality that did not, that lowered their real estate taxes below the maximum threshold, but it wasn't much, but they.
Yeah, I know, a municipality that eliminated their property tax because the commercial and industrial development, that they felt it wasn't necessary.
Hasn't our sales tax been, our income here has basically been flat for, how many years, you know?
You know, it, it ticks up, it ticks down, but it's a long time.
And what's happened to our cost of the city, insurance?
Yeah, they go up and they go up, and I would argue, I mean, I, yes, I shouldn't get involved in this because it's a policy decision and city administrators aren't supposed to make policy decisions. But.
Oh, boy.
But, well, it's a question of, in order to do this, if, you know, without an increase, whether or not you want to reduce the level of service somewhere else, and then you just have to decide what, what service is currently being provided has a lower priority than the police department, and then you could, and you do that, and as you said, that's a difficult decision, and that's, and it's made at the time of the budget.
I've been involved in a number of budgets and stuff, and there's some times, you know, budgets are just educated guesses, you know, that you try to live by and stuff, but, you know, there's times when those budgets don't add up, and you have to look back, this is your income, this is your projected expenses, what do you do, and a lot of times, there's a little bit of change for everything. I know we like to be the bearers of good news all the time, I've seen that in a couple of budgets. You know, unfortunately, city is a business, you know, and it has to operate within its needs. This is just a tough, tough, tough decision. I understand the police department's needs, and they are definitely real needs, we have an excellent police department, it's managed excellently. I have some concerns even within that department, I've mentioned a few of them, but, I don't know, this is just a, this is a tough one to, this is a tough one to come to.
Oh, I mean, back in August, when we did, went through the budget sessions and we talked about all this, we, as a board, agreed to bring this up to a vote of the people, and then we looked late till April. We're not deciding to do a tax to them, we're deciding to bring this to the people, which is what we promised when we kicked the can down the road when we did the visit in August.
Right.
So, you know, back in August, we were dealing with just all the other communities that passed Prop P and losing officers to better-paying agencies, the sheriff's department, one of them.
Sure, and if you'll remember in that meeting, I was the one that brought up, you know, the situation about the Prop Es being passed in the area, but, you know, I heard an old saying and stuff a long time ago, and I, I just live by, you can't pour six gallons of water out of a five-gallon bucket.
But where I'm getting at is, you know, we were, we were talking about all the communities that are passing these Prop Es, and, you know, the sheriff's department operating the way they are and giving out raises the way that they are. With the passage of the minimum wage law recently, and that taking effect, in a few years, we're not only going to be competing against other police departments for our officers, we're going to be competing against McDonald's. For what we start our officers on at, and what minimum wage is going to be at in a few years, there's not much difference. And I would rather, I would rather, I would rather flip a burger than get shot.
I would too.
Eric, do you have something?
Well, I, I would like to address a couple of things, first of all, I'm not any more in favor of, of taxing people than you guys are.
Right.
You know, it's certainly not my first choice, we went through the budget, I asked for money through the budget process to, to fund this, and it was a bone of contention then, and, and, you know, certainly, we're, we're all paying for the sins of boards fifty years ago, you know, that didn't have the forethought to, to allow businesses or bring businesses or let the interstate run closer to town and benefit from that. That's not my fault, I wasn't alive then, I wasn't on the board then, you guys weren't on the board then, some of you weren't alive then. However, I, I have tried, and I think pretty successfully, to not be in an adversarial position against the city, against the citizens, against the board, you know, certainly, we've always had a good working relationship, I don't want to see this be a negative issue with, with the citizens, I don't want to see, and I believe Mr. Rousey alluded to it, you know, I don't want to see this be put into a, a debate of, well, we either like the police department or we don't like the police department. I would like to think that we've made substantial improvements to the police department since I've come here, you know, we have a good rapport with the city, we have a good rapport with the citizens. When I took over the department, I, I got the feeling and was told that we had the reputation of being a call-taking agency, and what I mean by that is, if you got something stolen, you debated whether you were going to call the police department, because all they were going to do is going to take the report, and nothing was going to get done with it, and they'd have the report on file, but you're still out of your property. And we've taken a lot of really good steps, and I would credit Jason Crumford, but, the majority of it, he does a fantastic job, we put in a detective, and, and strive to, to get satisfaction for these victims, try to get restitution, try to get them whole again. And, and it's based entirely on the integrity and the validity of the employees that we have, just like every other department in the city, and I'm not taking away from any of the departments in the city, I think that all of our departments are well-run, and I think that we do a great job with the personnel that we have. What we want to do is, is, one, keep the personnel that we have, it's been mentioned in every budget meeting since I've been here, that, that, the, the cost of our training, the cost of our supplies, the cost of our work into getting an officer acclimated and, and a productive law enforcement officer, that understands the policing in a small town is different, this isn't St. Louis, you can't treat people like they do in St. Louis, and, and that's one thing that we've tried since I've taken over here, is to do our jobs, but do it effectively and treat people as well as they deserve to be treated at the time. There's some people that, that don't want to be handled that way, and, and, you know, so you have to be willing to do that also. But to train, and I, I can think of ten examples off the top of my head, of very, very good officers that left this agency, that came in as green as could be and left this agency, phenomenal police officers that have gone to Arnold and, and the sheriff's department, and Jefferson County, that, that are serving their citizens now and not ours. And, and again, I have some younger officers, I have some newer officers that, that we're training now, and hopefully, they will be as good as, as the other people, but I can guarantee, if we don't start paying them, they're going to be great officers for other places. Alderman Prince just referenced a second ago, the sheriff's department has just announced another sixty-five hundred dollar across-the-board raise for every commissioned officer there, which spreads us even farther away from, from their starting salary. You know, the twelve dollars an hour in five years, we just now got the twelve dollars an hour a couple of years ago, and these guys, like, like somebody said, you know, could potentially get, get shot. You know, I think that the board, you guys have always, and the boards before you, have done a great job of fulfilling our requests, when we need equipment, you guys give us equipment, you know, the, the morale of the, of the officers, I think, is as important as anything. If, if your officers are walking around pissed off, it's going to spill out into everything that they do, and you can't come to work, ready to work and ready to be officer-friendly, when you've got, you've got bill collectors calling, and, and, you know, you've got a baby on the way and don't know how you're going to feed him, and, and again, I know that that's not unique to this police department or, or this line of work even, you know, nobody gets into police work to be rich, but we're also not monks. And, and, all I'm asking, you know, we, we will put the legwork in, we will talk to the citizens, we will hold town hall meetings, we will, we will fight, I say fight, we will support this as, as much as we can, we will, we will educate, we will, we will do everything that we can, but I need your support tonight to make sure it gets to the ballot. I realize it's a tough issue, I realize it's a really terrible position to be in, I didn't put us in this position, you guys didn't put us in this position, but we're in this position, you know, the city's as big as it's going to get, the businesses that are here are here, I would love to see more businesses come in, but that's above my pay grade, that's above my, my, my focus, my focus is on, on my officers and my department, and again, I think that I have put some really key players in, in position that have served the citizens very, very well, and it's harder to put those keys in position when we can't attract them, and, and again, the adage for years has been, trying to compare officers or departments of similar size, I'm not losing officers to similar size, I'm not, I'm not losing the best candidates from the department, I'm sorry, from the academy, to departments of similar size, I'm losing them to the agency a mile of my road that is paying their guys ten dollars more an hour than I am. That's twenty thousand dollars a year, I don't, I, I can't compete with that, you know, and, and we do, we do provide good insurance, and, and I am completely grateful to you guys for that, I know that that's a struggle every year, and I promise you that it's an appreciated benefit. And, and that, that has given us the opportunity for years to, to shroud the issue that our officers were underpaid, because it was semi-comparable to, to the overall money that, that the sheriff's department was making and other agencies were making, but we're far beyond, behind the times right now, and, and I'm, I'm, again, I don't want to, to take an adversarial role in this, I want to support this initiative, I want to educate people and, and implore them to, to be reasonable. I understand people on fixed incomes don't have more money, we don't have more money, you guys don't have more money, and, and it's going to be a struggle for people, and I appreciate that, it's going to be a struggle for me as well, I buy things in this town like everybody else does, and I, my go-to is not raise taxes, I, I would love to find the, the golden egg that can fund this without going to the, to the people. I've looked, you guys have looked, I don't, I don't see it, I don't know where it's at, but I, I can promise that if, if, if we don't at least get the support of the board on this, we're going to be operating very shorthanded, and again, I don't, I don't mean that to be a threat in any way, but I've, I've seen, I've seen the writing on the wall, and I, I know the morale of the department as it is right now, these guys are hopeful that, that something will happen, and again, they could leave here right now, even a five, six, seven-year officer right now, there are sergeants making at the sheriff's department more than I'm making as chief here. So, I mean, they could go up there, again, they won't be hired in as sergeants, I'm not implying that, but they could leave here and, and easily increase substantially the, the amount of money that they could make here, and the reason that they are staying is because they love the city as much as I do, they love the city as much as you do, and, and they want to do a good job, and I think they do do a good job. I, I can almost guarantee that, that the members of this board and the members of the board ten years ago, eleven years ago, when I started, are hearing vastly different complaints or, or issues about the sheriff, the, the police department. And, and I'm not taking anything away from the, the previous administrations, and I'm certainly not trying to pat myself on the back, but I, the officers that we have hired have, have helped to turn that reputation around, and I, I strongly encourage you to support this measure so that we can show these guys that, that we do appreciate them, and I know you guys do appreciate them, I don't mean to imply otherwise. But, but we're, we're definitely at a turning point with, with all of the different propositions that have gone and been passed throughout the state, and, and especially nearby communities, surrounding communities, and, and again, even without a proposition, the, the raises that the sheriff's department are giving, it's affecting us, and it's going to affect us substantially if we don't take some step. So I would just ask that you guys support this measure, at least let it go to the voters, we're willing to put the work in, we're willing to do the legwork and, and educate, and, but we need your support right now in putting this on.
Eric, I don't know if everybody's really aware of it or not, that you're kind of behind the eightfold, but the sheriff's department has the ability to generate income.
Correct. Correct, and, and I've seen some comments, you know, about the, the, the reason that we're remodeling the place in the first place is because of the Ferguson thing, you know, generating twenty percent or, or cities making twenty percent of their general revenue on, on fines and taxes, our general revenue is two point eight million dollars a year, we'd have to write four hundred and seventy-seven tickets each officer to, to make up for that, and that's assuming it's a hundred-dollar fine, it's a population of four thousand, and then you get into the. And then you get into the issues of, well, don't write tourists because we want tourists to come back here. Well, then that leaves writing the residents. And then you get the other faction of people that are, don't write residents because, you know, they support. So, you know, we enforce the law. Obviously, there's going to be some discretion. I don't think that you want us out there writing every license plate light violation that we see. You know, we try to, we try to be reasonable. We don't want to be a speed trap. We don't want to be known as, you know, the little town that is supplementing their budget with tax, with these fines and these tickets. And I can assure everybody that's listening, and maybe this isn't a selling point for us, but it's the fact, I don't even know if our court system makes money. I mean, by the time you pay the judge and the prosecutor and the administrative fees of court, you know, we're not doing this, this is not a money-making venture. We're not in this line of work to make the city money. We're here to make it safer. If somebody gets a ticket because they're breaking the law, they get a ticket because they're breaking the law. But I'm certainly not ever going to be supportive of any type of a quota system to push our guys or encourage our guys to try to make up some of this money by passing it on through tickets and fines. Because that's going to be nothing but detrimental to our reputation and to the morale of the city and their perception and relationship with our department.
And one last comment, stuff that I didn't know if everybody was aware of, that we do support the Sheriff's Department with a half-cent sales tax.
Yes, they have a law enforcement sales tax on the ballot now.
Wish we could share that.
I do too.
That's a countywide, countywide sales tax.
Yes. Yes. And again, I don't want to, I don't want to come across as having anything but respect for the Sheriff's Department. They do a great job, they've got some great officers as well. They deserve the money. I'm not saying that they don't deserve the raise that they got, but so do our guys. And, you know, they are my concern, this department is my concern, and that's why I'm asking for you guys' support.
Chief, one of the biggest things I hear back from the constituents, when we put this on the ballot to go forward to the people, I think that we need to arm ourselves or have our arsenal ready to answer questions like, for a population of 4,000, how many officers do we have? And how many do we need? Do we need to have all the vehicles we have and the equipment? Because I'm being bombarded with, okay, so for a population of 4,000, they're saying that they think they have 15, 17 officers. For the record, could you tell everybody how many officers you have?
I would love for them to think that we have that many. We have 11 officers.
Thank you.
We had 10 when we had to change the court clerk situation. I was paying for half of the court clerk's salary through our budget when the Ferguson stuff came along. We were not, we were no longer able to combine those two positions. It was expressly written in there that that has to be a separate employee. So with the support of the board, we eliminated that position from our budget and created an 11th position that we used as a detective position. And that was just this last budget year. So we have 11 officers. Some of the other comments I saw on Facebook, and I know it's the next thing on the agenda, are the firearms that we're looking at.
Yes. You clarify that.
I will clarify that. When I came in here, again, 10 years ago, we were carrying 10-year-old firearms then. And at that time, we carried Glock firearms. They offer a program where they will buy ours back or, you know, give us a discount on purchasing new guns. So we currently have a full-size duty gun that we carry. And I also, and there's, I don't want to say a loophole, but a requirement that police officers act in the commission of a felony, even if they're outside of their jurisdiction. We are required to act. If we come in on a bank robbery or violent assault or any felony act, we are required to act or we're negligent. So because of that, we started, when we bought the guns, when I came in 10 years ago, we bought a smaller backup duty weapon that we encouraged all of our guys to carry off duty because the large gun is cumbersome and it's not easy to carry. So they are issued now, they're weapons that we own. So those and the full-size guns that we carry now, we are proposing trading in, getting another comparable gun. You know, we've done a lot of research to make sure we're not going to be into the added expenses of holsters and mag pouches and everything, but we're looking at a system for just trading in what we have for another firearm that will reuse a lot of the equipment that we have. But that does include a full-size duty weapon for 11 officers and a backup duty, a backup weapon for 11 officers.
That clears it up. Very good. Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
We have 11 vehicles?
We have 11 vehicles. We have one vehicle per officer.
But we've been through this, there's no way that...
We've shared cars in the past and, you know, your hot seat in a car, one guy's getting off duty as the next guy's rolling in and, you know, the wear and tear goes up, the morale goes down. You know, we've found it's not a huge expense for another vehicle. But the, it gives these guys some skin in the game, it gives them some pride in what they have. They keep it clean, they maintain it. It's a lot more serviceable because it's not on the road 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, you know, it's a program that we put in sometime back. I realize that it is an expense and I'm not trying to downplay that aspect of it, but it's certainly not extreme, I don't believe. You know, it's pretty comparable with other law enforcement agencies. The Sheriff's Department has a vehicle for every full-time deputy. So, you know, I realize that, that it, you know, sometimes perception is reality and maybe, maybe people perceive that to be excessive. I don't feel that it is. You know, we have a good, good vehicle replacement program in place. You know, the goal is to be able to lessen the financial burden on the city once we get all the vehicles and all of the program fully in place to where you're not paying for another vehicle when we buy new vehicles. When we trade these in, they've still got some trade-in value. When we stop rotating them to departments in the city, but actually try to sell them, I think it's going to be beneficial to the city. So if that helps.
Does that answer your questions?
Alderman, thank you, chief.
So I would like to, is there any other questions before you...
It's not a question, it's a comment.
I'll comment, we'll take it.
All right. I would like to first start off and reiterate what everybody else has said, is a tremendous amount of respect that I and I think everybody at this board has for the police department.
Thank you.
You in particular, I think you're an excellent manager. In the time I've been here, I've seen you work your changes. I have no quarrel whatsoever. I think we have an excellent police force. And I, I don't think that is in all places. Okay? So I think you're exceptional in that, in that regard. And I always have been and will continue to be a supporter and an advocate for the police department. But I am really struggling here because on a level of personal principle...
I understand.
The tax thing just rubs me wrong.
I understand.
And I, when I vote on this, I want you to know that it in no way is a reflection on how I feel about the police department.
Well, if I...
And I'll let you get to that. I just want to get a point across that I feel there are other avenues. Now, maybe we can't get you everything all at once, but I believe there is room to work towards it. And when I brought up some suggestions, I feel like we got through the last budget, but I think there is room to go back and read, to review the coming budget before the deadline. We got a year to work on it almost. And I think that we can effect some changes that way and maybe some other things, but I, I'm struggling with the tax thing.
I understand.
And I just want you to know when I vote.
Okay. But before you vote, I've heard that nine times. I've gone through nine budget processes.
I know.
And every year, somebody makes some grand promises, they're going to look at the budget and try to do right by us. And I'm not saying that you guys haven't.
Well, I tried last year.
But it passes, it passes down the line every single year. What I would love to see, you are a citizen in this town, you have the right to go to the polls and vote no for this. I would love to see a unanimous vote.
And that's what this board is going to decide here tonight is what we're going to do and to let the people decide this. That's what we talked about, that's the promise we made to the police department in August that we're going to bring it to the voters. Nobody likes paying more taxes, but let's let the people decide it. And I think we need to just go with the, with all the clarity of it, this half-cent sales tax. I know sales tax is high, but let the people decide it. And that's, that's my two cents on it. So, and that's what the board is being challenged tonight. So, other than that, I know we've already had comments, we've talked to the public, it's commented on it, we've got plenty of comments, but let them be heard, let them speak at the polls is my, I implore. Everybody will have an opportunity to vote on it, so.
We have to decide whether or not to do the half-cent or the property tax, right? Either or, correct?
Act on, yeah, either or.
Either or.
If you're going to act on one...
Forget the other.
We'll just forget the other.
Yeah.
The half-cent sales tax is what's going to get the money we need to do what we need to do with the police department.
But you have to get that passed first.
We have to get it, but let's let the people decide.
I think you're going to have a hard time, you're going to have an easier time with the property tax. With the property tax, well, it's for us to decide if we're going to put front a sales tax or a property tax. I think the property tax is going to be a better sell.
How much harder are we going to come up with the property tax? How much, what is the figure that that's going to generate? Does anybody...
I think Mark had the figures.
And like Randy said, couldn't we do something this year and then try to do something else in the future to get there instead of trying to do one lump sum? I mean, I don't think they're going to go for the sales tax. I think what you need is a burden to hand. If you want this to happen, put it before the constituents with property.
I have a figure off the top of my head after you go ahead.
Go ahead.
And the property is going based off current, that's not going to go off what other developments are going to come forward, which will raise more, so.
With the property tax in general.
So what are we waiting for?
Waiting for him to answer the question of how much revenue it's going to...
Right now, he's having a problem with his computer.
Well, I don't know the exact figure because the...
But either, whatever the figure is, it's probably going to be a better, we're going to come up with some money and it may not be all of it. And then maybe we can look at, in the budgets, maybe we can look at some things to get it where we need to be.
I make a motion to approve putting this before the constituents for property tax increase.
Which would be, which one are we?
It would be Bill 4261.
Yeah.
Well, the, yeah, the motion's more of a declaration of intent as opposed to accepting a reading. The way it was phrased, it is make a motion and put it on the...
Whatever needs to happen, let's make it so. Do I have a second?
Well, so we had a, we never, we never read 4256.
That's right. Does the board want to, what is the board, let's talk about that. Do you want to, do we feel the board, the consensus of the board here to go with Bill number 4261?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Here we go. Bill number 4261, an ordinance providing...
Do you have to go in our...
No, you can just go ahead and roll with it.
Bill number 4261, an ordinance providing for submission of increase in tax levy of $2,684 and $10,000 per $100. Assess valuation for the purpose of improving public safety for an election to be held on April 2nd, 2019, prescribing a form of ballot therefore, thereof, containing an emergency clause, the first reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Yes, sir.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. I hear.
Okay.
I prefer a second reading.
Yes. All right, we have a motion and a second for, we have...
Second reading.
For a second reading, okay. Bill number 4261, an ordinance providing for submission of...
Hold on, right?
Got to read it first.
Got to read it.
No, I mean for the second.
We had a motion and a second on the first reading.
Oh, I thought you voted on it.
For the second reading.
We voted for the first reading, we voted for the, we're done with the first reading. The second reading, I had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, second reading, sorry. Bill number 4261, an ordinance providing for submission of an increase in tax levy of $2,684 and $10,000 for $100. Assess valuation for the purpose of improving public safety for an election to be held on April 2nd, 2019, prescribing a form of ballot thereof and containing an emergency clause.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do I have a roll call vote?
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rezika.
No.
Six yes, one no, one absent. Bill number 4261 now becomes ordinance 4190.
Thank you very much. We'll go back up to bill number 4259, this is the first reading, an ordinance approving amendment number one to the development plan for the downtown St. Genevieve Tax Increment Financing District and authorizing certain actions related thereof. Is there any comments? Bob, you here for any comments on this?
I think the lawyer should describe what happens if you go against the law of the commission.
Mark Spikerman from Gilmore Bell here, here to address the legalities.
Thank you. Again, Mark Spikerman, Gilmore and Bell, I'm the attorney for the city on TIF projects. The, back in late November, after quite a bit of deliberation, the TIF commission considered a couple of different options. One would be to remove some properties from the TIF district and then take the remaining properties and divide them into several redevelopment project areas. That was option one. Option two was to only divide the remaining parcels into two redevelopment project areas. The significance of dividing, of creating separate redevelopment project areas is that it allows the, basically the TIF revenues, the base, the increment, to be calculated on a per-project area basis, which, which basically solves an accounting issue. There were several properties that had seen decreases in assessed value. Some of them went nonprofit, then there was, let's see, a vacant factory building. The accumulation of those decreases, when you looked at the area as a whole, meant that the 2018 assessed value was below the 2011 or 2013 assessed value and thus no pilots, no TIF revenues were being generated on the area as a whole. The thought was, you take out the nonprofit properties that are no longer generating any assessed value and you take, and you take other properties and you make them your own redevelopment project areas, you can now start generating TIF revenues because you're, you're getting rid of a drag and then you're doing the accounting on an individual basis. And the math, frankly, it works. But the two options ended up being, again, two separate redevelopment project areas, which were basically all the remaining parcels except for the property at 175 10th Street. And then another option where basically anyone who had asked to be a separate redevelopment project area for, frankly, whatever reason or no reason whatsoever could. The TIF commission, I know there's just one member here, debated it quite significantly and I believe their thought was it was more fair to just have two redevelopment project areas. The Lucite Building, the building on 10th Street is kind of a unique case here. I mean, it's a, it's a huge building, it's a $300,000 drag on, negative drag on the assessed value. It needed to be taken care of one way or the other to make the accounting work. And then on the other side, once you've removed the Lucite Building and the nonprofit buildings, there wasn't as big of an impetus to create other redevelopment project areas. And it was kind of unfair to single, single out certain properties over other properties for that treatment. And frankly, without a pressing need to do so, that, I believe the TIF commission was not inclined to do so and that's the way they voted. Because they voted to do only the two redevelopment project areas, you guys are left with a, kind of a Sophie's Choice. Not a, you can either vote to agree with them. If you vote to disagree with them, to try to change the amendment, well, I guess there's three things. You could send it back to them and we could repeat the whole TIF commission process again and hope for a different, a different outcome. But if you, if you tried to amend it without going back to the TIF commission, you'd kind of throw everything into legal jeopardy. The TIF Act was amended a few years ago. It said that, well, prior to that amendment, boards of Aldermen were able to go against a TIF commission recommendation as long as they had two-thirds approval and that was, that was it. A couple of years ago, the TIF Act was amended that says if you go against TIF commission or... ago, the TIF Act was amended that says if you go against, uh, TIF Commission approval, the choice, the universe of costs the TIF can be used for would be limited to demolition and site clearance, which are not activities that this TIF in particular is really funding. This TIF was meant for building rehab. So if you were to vote against the TIF Commission's recommendation, there'd be a very strong argument that you would basically handcuff the TIF into an unworkable position because we'd no longer be able to spend money on what it was intended to be used for.
Do we need a motion?
Move to, uh, move to accept the TIF Commission's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Bill number forty-two sixty?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill number forty-two sixty, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from KISLS Police Supply Incorporated for the purchase of thirteen Glock G seventeen-nine millimeter pistols and nine, nine clocks, G forty-three, forty-three millimeter pistols in the amount not to exceed two thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cents.
First.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Other business. We have other business here.
Oh, geez.
Don't settle in here. Michael Mills requested a special use permit and variance that would allow an illuminated digital LED freestanding poll sign to be installed and operated at one eighty-one Washington Street. A planning and zoning commission denied the request. The Board of Aldermen needs to accept the planning and zoning denial, at which time the applicant can appeal the denial.
Make them accept.
I second.
Pardon me?
Move to accept.
And I second.
You second. We got a first and a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that what we need on that?
Yeah, that's fine. And if there's an appeal, then we have to schedule a hearing tomorrow next week.
How much time does he have to appeal it?
Ten days.
Okay.
Or you could, uh, if he's here, you could do it.
He's here.
Where's he at?
You want, you want to appeal?
Uh, yes, sir. All right, that's good enough. So it's, it's up to you very next, two weeks.
Is there any other communication? Is there a need to go into closed session?
Uh, only if you wanna talk about the water tower contract.
Briefly.
Briefly.
I guess we're going in close session.
See if we vote for it. Still gotta vote for it.
Yes. I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a two-call vote to God.
Roll call.
Oh, oh, um, yes.
It's a meeting that's never ended.
Alderman Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mooney.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
We're getting punchy.
Alderman Jokers.
Yeah.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Rosika.
Before we do those, can you explain to Mike while he's here, what he needs to do now?
Oh!
He did, did it.
Yes, did it.
It's done. They will, they will publish a, a notice of a public hearing.
Absolutely.
That's a fourteen-day notification.
That's because it may be fifteen days, so it will not be the next meeting.
Thank you.
Wait a minute.